I call the planning commission meeting for August 17, 2023 to order. We'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, we call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Ms. Small?
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Excused.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on July 27, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings and we will follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so, or some people may just have questions and we'll try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow outside dining and/or drinking at 8768 Manor Avenue. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Frazier. I'm a Minter High School graduate, and I'm an architect at Studio One Design Group at 2451 Stratford Road in Cleveland Heights, Ohio. I'm here tonight representing Studio One Design Group and The Human Bean.
Could you spell your name real quick and give us your address?
Um.
Your last name.
F.R.A.Z.I.E.R.
Thanks.
And 2451 Stratford Road, spelled S.T.R.A.T.F.O.R.D.R.O.A.D. in Cleveland Heights, Ohio, 44118. That's Studio One Design Group's address, not my personal.
Okay.
Okay. So, Human Bean is a new tenant that would be moving into the building that was, at one time Burger King, then it was Nick's most recently, and they would be occupying the left side of the building, not quite half, more like a third of the building. It's been through already, but there's an existing outdoor patio. It's covered, and it is in front of the building, between the building and the street, and the tenant would like to, the owner would like to occupy the patio that's there, so we're seeking conditional use to have outside dining. In this case, it's a coffee shop, so it would be more coffee beverage drinking on the patio. We would be proposing to put furniture back onto the patio, approximately eight tables and 16 chairs, metal, commercial style with the open mesh top, and some ambient music, low ambient music, just to give some atmosphere and to help with the sound of the road nearby to help disguise that a little bit. Are there any questions?
Well, hold on one second. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
No, Mr. Chairman, other than the three conditions noted.
You've read the staff report, and you're okay with the three conditions?
Yes, the conditions would be that the patio hours would be the same as the restaurant, and that's understood here, understandable. The background music, limited to 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., the client would be okay with that. The bollards, according to 1173, that would amount to about four bollards across the front and about four bollards for the east side, as noted on here, and we have added those to the drawings, three-foot-high, painted black, spaced symmetrically along the side to coordinate with the existing canopy columns and fencing.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga?
Just have one question, and it would, there's another tenant, future tenant, we don't know what it is.
Correct.
Might be a restaurant.
We don't know yet.
Would they be able to use the outdoor dining area too?
That would be a future discussion with the future tenant. As of now, we are proposing that it would be only for The Human Bean.
Okay. I mean, it's not, it's not a requirement for me.
Right. We have no knowledge of-
I just wondered if they would be available, because otherwise we'll have this back in front of us again when someone else moves in.
It would be specific to that address.
Yeah, well, okay. All right, that's all. Just wanted to ask that.
Thank you. Anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion. All right, give us your name and address.
That's what we have. David Campbell.
Okay.
I live at 7273 Marion Drive, about 150 feet away. My concern is the ambient music. If it's to be loud enough to combat the traffic, 150 feet away, I just don't want to hear music every day, from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you. Kathy, could you address the code for that?
They would have to be in compliance with the noise ordinance, which is one of the conditions noted. That's under Chapter 531, Noise Control. I think the hours are actually, during the week, seven to nine. We actually made it eight to nine to be more consistent with the other business hours. Again, based on what they're saying, soft background music, and we've been very specific with, no bands or anything like that, so I don't anticipate a problem. I mean, most of the other similar related uses that have any kind of music, it hasn't been an issue, that have anything outside.
Okay.
Just a speaker.
If there is an issue, what is my recourse? If I can, like, just follow that on your end. Is there any music? Problem with it? It's just, I don't know.
Yeah, you gotta speak into, you gotta get into the microphone here. I'm getting a wave here.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just, I just didn't know what my recourse-
If they're in compliance with the Noise Control chapter, then, then there wouldn't be any issue. If you do feel there's a violation, you would contact the police department. Yep.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
All right, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the three conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Conditional use permit to allow a private school at 7671 Johnny Cake Ridge Road. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, tell us a little bit about what you want to do at 7671.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Ferris, and our address is 7671 Johnny Cake Ridge Road, Minter, Ohio, 44060. And we are wanting to add a ministry at LifePoint Church that is a homeschool co-op, where we will have families that are currently homeschooling come together on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:15 to 3:15 to educate our kids in subjects such as math, language arts. We have some elective courses such as art and science, STEM class, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
No, Mr. Chairman, we have two, two conditions noted, namely, number two, that if future school enrollment dictates any kind of building or site alterations, additional classrooms needed, et cetera, anything that would warrant change in traffic circulation, then those changes would have to be reviewed by the planning commission.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Current enrollment is seen as what? Going to be what? It said 41, is that?
It's actually 40 currently.
And what portion of the building is being used for that?
It's our current kids wing, so it's that back pod, yeah, right there. So, it's all of the classes that are currently being used on Sundays for services for our kids. We're just going to be using those on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I just heard the hours of operation. How do you, how do you deal with lunch?
They'll be eating lunch in the classroom.
Okay, there's no prepared food, there's no kitchen, need for kitchen, anything like that?
No, they bring a packed lunch.
Okay. It was a school, now it's a church, now I think it's going to be a school again with a church, right? I know it says in the condition that it'll be brought up to the building code standard, but the standard will now have to be for current school facility. Correct?
Yeah, and the chief building official's aware of that, and the fire department's also aware of that.
Because that'll get involved with a lot of different things, including some, you know, there's a second floor with open stairs. I know it goes into a lobby, but there's, you're gonna have to look at all that stuff again, because it could be quite involved. And there's no kind of communal transportation, it's just gonna be, all the parents show up, that pick the kids up.
Yes, sir.
Now, when we, we reviewed this to go from a school, well, the school was empty, so it was nothing, but when the school to a church, though I'm surprised there's no one reacting here in the community, they were all very, quite concerned about all the traffic in their neighborhood. How do you, if there's 40 kids, I would guess there's 30 cars. Is there a place for 30 cars to queue up? I mean, have you anticipated the situation without it being in the neighborhood, or?
Yes, sir. They'll be in that back parking lot there. They'll, we have 24 families with 40 kids, so there will be, at the most, 24 cars.
All right. And you'll meet all, I mean, my, my biggest concern is that schools are quite, you know, when this was built, I think this was built, Kathy, was this built in the 60s?
I can't, I can't say for sure, but I mean-
It's been a while.
Yeah.
1954.
Ooh.
Okay. Well, the reason I bring it up is because I don't, I mean, I don't have any list or anything, I'm not trying to be like that, but there's gonna be a lot of changes or additional requirements of the building to be a school now than it was in 1954, is that what you said? So, I know that's, that's the responsibility of the building official to maintain that or, you know, require that. I just want to emphasize that that's gonna get involved with some fire protection, lots of stuff, you know, I just, so that, you know, that's all. And it is a condition, so it's nothing I can do, I'm really just saying this for the sake of expressing that, that there's gonna be a lot of things that have changed in 50, 60 years, 60 years. No, 70 years. Oh, God, 70 years since it was built, so that, and that it is a school, and so all those requirements will have to be made. I don't know what-
You gotta give us your, give us your name and address.
Ken Wright, I'm the senior pastor, and 7671 Johnny Cake Ridge Road.
You're asking me what those requirement, I mean, I, I could spend some time and go over the code and tell you, but it's, you know, I, I'm not, it's not up to me, it's the building code, building officials, and I would certainly suggest your architect should know what those requirements are, and that he and the building official meet to make sure that that whole-
I guess to rephrase that would be, currently what we're doing, what we're proposing with our current permit, or is there a difference in those two?
Yes. Right now, it's a church, assembly, single spite, space, basically, you know, I think that even in the original drawings, we got those classrooms who were like darkened out, that weren't really included as the use, they were ancillary to the church use. Now, this is primarily gonna be a school with an assembly area that's a church, because the school is more demanding, the, the, the school use is more demanding than the church. So, it'll be reviewed as a school. Schools are, have a lot of requirements. I mean, I don't, you know, they have to do alarms, you know, fire issues, nothing, if not more than, I, I don't want to be the person to give you the list, I don't want, you know, but I'm just saying, I know, I know that there's a lot of requirements in schools today that are, you know, and you should just review those, you know? And they're, they're gonna be in the, in the Ohio Building Code, so it's not like it's a mystery or, you know, those requirements. Have you, there's also another require, well, I don't know if it's required by the Building Code so much, the state of Ohio has Ohio Schools Facility Commission standards. They don't all apply necessarily to an existing condition, but they're also, but the standards that the state uses for school design, so.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit confused on the wording, because saying it's going from a church to a school is not really accurate. It's still, it's a church, that's the primary purpose and function of the building, which-
Well, you, you can, once you start using it as a school, regularly scheduled school, it's my, I don't, I don't want to be the last word on this, but it's my interpretation that that would now be a school, and you'd have to meet the school requirements.
On our occupancy permit now, it's under education as well, and office space?
Yeah, but those are ancillary to a church use definition. I mean, it's, it's the building use, it's in the code, so it says what you can, you know, I think at this point, and I don't want to be the last word on this, I'm just really bringing this more to your attention than it is a condition, because the condition is in the Building Code. But I believe it's gonna be considered a school at this point, as it was previously, because you're now having regularly scheduled classes for students. That's a school use, it's defined in the code. And that, and that you'll have to meet those requirements. That's all I was trying to get at, is that it won't be just an extension of the church, it will now be a school use. Let me-
Chairman?
Mr. Miller.
It's my understanding that the, both the chief building official and the fire department have done a site visit, they've looked at it. What, based on Mr. Varga's concerns, what I would strongly suggest that you do is if you have any questions about what might be required, you know, even locking doors and things like that, you have to be careful with that. The building official and the fire inspector are both very accessible, they're very willing to help, they're very willing to come out to your site, strongly urge you to do that, just to make sure that the children are gonna be safe and cared for, which I know is a priority for your church. I wouldn't, I wouldn't see it any other way, but if you have any doubt about what's required of you because you're using the building in a slightly different way, I would strongly suggest talking to those officials.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
And that's my concern too, is that the health, safety, and welfare of the students and of the occupants. Now, as you start to use this as a school, you probably don't want to be limited to 40 students, right? I mean, you don't want that as a condition. You're gonna want to have more students, and I would think you'd want to grow your, your educational facility to some degree. I mean, this facility technically has a capacity of almost 500 students. It was never, even when it was a school, it wasn't that much, but it was around 300, 320.
Yep.
So, you know, there's no limitation, once it's a school, as to what, how many students you can have, and, you know, how much of a program that you want to offer, and how it run, how you run it. But once you start using it as a school, it's a school, it's not a church.
Well, again, for point of clarification, does that then take away our occupancy as a church?
No, it does not.
No, 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 no more, no more than when the church was there that you couldn't use those classrooms. You could use those classrooms, but only in an ancillary function to the church. But now this program is, in addition to the church, and again, I would still go, you know, the building official is the final word on this, so I don't want to necessarily be telling you definitively this, but it's my, I'm an architect too, and so it's my understanding that once you start using this as a school, that the school requirements have to be met.
This is kind of new territory for us, as far as the education aspect of it, especially with the homeschooling, which is still the parents responsible for educating their children. We're hosting, basically, the kids at that particular time. Is it still considered under-
It doesn't, it doesn't matter how you operate it. It's, the function is what the Building Code deals with. So, if the function is that of an educational facility, regardless of who's teaching, or who's the students, or who's the teachers, or how you fund it, or what, you know, it has nothing to do with the operations, has to do with the, what the nature of the, of the activity is, that the occupancy is determined by, which is what the Building Code refers to. So, if you're gonna run a regularly scheduled school, even if it's two days a week, it becomes a school. And so, you need to meet the requirements of the school for the Building Code. And, and you should look into this in further details and find out from the building officials, fire marshal, people like that.
Mr. Mitchell?
I think one additional condition, and this might relieve some concerns of everybody here, is usually what we indicate to, and we just failed to provide it, but if there are gonna be no interior changes to the building, following the issuance of the CUP, they should also get an occupancy permit, which will prompt an inspection.
Review, right.
So, you can add a third condition that says, obtain an occupancy permit prior, following issuance of the CUP. And, and then, again, that's just a second step, and, and we do that anyway when there are no changes to the building. So, the CUP, you know, is one thing, but in having the occupancy, then it also gives that additional review by the building department, fire if necessary, and then the zoning, so you can add that as a third condition, to just obtain an occupancy permit following CUP issuance, that's it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to make a problem for you, but I'm trying to actually give you a heads up that, you know, you're going back to making this, what, using parts of the building as a school, gotta meet the requirements of the school, and like you said, the school was built 70 years ago, I can't believe it. And so, there are certain things that may have changed since 70 years ago, and now you're doing this new again, so, I mean, it's not new building, but you're creating a new school here. It was a church, now it's gonna be a school, so. I know that may, that may rattle the cage a little bit, but I'm just trying to give you a heads up.
But it's, it's essentially parents bringing their kids to school that normally homeschool their kids at home, and now they're using your facility to do it, right? Essentially?
Correct.
Is there tuition, is it free?
No.
Oh, there's a, so the parents pay a tuition? Okay.
Yes, yes, parents pay a tuition for supplies, and to pay for our administrative team, we have three administrative teams, they are the leads for ensuring that the classrooms are running smoothly and are structured well, so the kids are able to be in a learning environment where they can really thrive. So, they kind of plan the lessons for the day, and so it pays for that, it pays for all of the supplies, such as, yeah, curriculum, art supplies, science supplies, STEM supplies, you know, any, anything that needs to be added to the classrooms, if we need like additional chairs or tables or anything like that.
But it's, it's parents teaching their kids?
Yes, sir.
They're not, they're not-
Yes, every, every child that is in the co-op, their parent will be there with them, and so there's no kids that are coming in that their family is not a part of this community.
So, it's not a, how do I say it, like a state-recognized school?
No, sir. It is not governmentally funded, there is no state testing, the parents are the teacher. We believe that parents are the first teacher, and we are just hosting these families to come together, so their kids can have some social time, can learn together, make friends, and, you know, just really enjoy being together and learning together.
Okay. But I, I do see what Mr. Varga's saying about, once you start, once you, once you have all the kids in the school, is it, it may not be by definition a state-recognized school, but do you fall under some of those same codes as if it is, because it's really all about safety anyway? I think nobody would argue with that, so-
Right.
I think you need to look into the occupancy permit and, and what goes into it, and, and I for one don't know what that is, so, whatever, whatever it shall be. Is there anything else from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Crocker?
I have a question about enrollment, so currently 40 kids. So, in the, in the future, do you have like a goal or a limit that you're trying to drive this to in mind, or is it just kind of wherever it goes, it goes? I'm not sure what your plan is.
So, the current plan right now is that we, we, that we're intentional about keeping it small, so we, we only have so many classrooms that we can use, right? And we want to make sure that it is a safe learning environment for everybody, so we capped it at 40, and we have a waitlist, but we are not, we are not enrolling any more students, because we feel that 40 is a good number for us to be able to manage well, and for them to be able to occupy these classrooms, and them have enough space to, you know, learn safely and everything.
Thank you. And is there, is there an age, like, range for the, for the kid?
Yeah, it's kindergarten through fifth grade.
Okay, so K through five. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, for administration, this is just for September of '23 to '24, so they're gonna have to come back yearly to do this, no?
We didn't, we didn't recommend a condition that it, that they have to continue to come back, unless, you know, that's, that wasn't the plan. I mean, we don't traditionally do that with other schools, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
Kathy, along that line, they can, if they grow their program to say five days a week and 80 kids or something like that, they don't have to come back to us if they change the nature of their program, even though they've stated two days a week, they still have the flexibility of growing the program, right?
Correct.
Without, without having an issue with the allowance, right?
Yeah, that's why we worded condition number two the way we did, just indicating that if, if the school enrollment dictates a building or site alteration, then they should come back. But I don't think we want to be in the business of, okay, now they go to 50, and then you gotta come back, and, you know?
I wanted to clarify that for them, that they were-
Yeah.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, going 40 to 50, but I do remember, if I remember the street correctly, and it was Palmer, that there was quite an issue with that stacking, and, and I know you were here too, so you got to hear it, and I think, I think it got tabled a few times, we had a few discussions on it. So, I think there is a limit to where you get to a certain number, because you have 24 spots. If you start stacking down Palmer, I mean, there almost has to be a limit where you have to come, I mean, you don't want to turn into 500 kids without having to come back and look at traffic flow and all that. So, I, I don't know what the sweet spot number is, but I think there is a number to where it gets too big. I don't know. Kathy, do you have any thing to add on it?
I mean, this is uncharted territory, to be honest with you, so I, no, I don't. I mean, you know, you've, you've put other provisions where you reserve jurisdiction if you feel, like, with drive-throughs, you've, you've indicated it, that you reserve the right to bring it back if you feel it's necessary, I mean, you know, at any time, per that section of the code, you can do that, if you want to add that in as a condition, you can say that, you know, for, you know, for safety and traffic purposes, the planning commission reserves the right to bring this, this CUP back if, if it deems necessary, you know, but again-
Yeah, I think that's fair. Mr. Varga?
No, no, I was just, I was thinking a lot.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve with three conditions.
Four, let's make it, let's make the fourth one, if traffic stacks, if there's a, if there's a, like what we do on Zappies, and I think we did that at the new Chicken Popeyes, whatever that is.
The planning commission reserves the right to request additional review of this conditional use permit under Section 113507, for purposes of traffic and safety concerns.
If the city starts getting some complaints about traffic stacking, so on and so forth, then-
Yeah, one of the residents that had an issue in the past, owned their home, so, and we've reconciled with them, and so we've had a good relationship with them.
And it should be fine, it should be fine, but I know you remember this.
I do remember this.
So, so George, you had the floor, so.
Thanks. Number three is obtain occupancy permit upon CUP approval. Number four, the planning commission reserves the right to review per Section 113507 for traffic and safety concerns.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under old business, items three through five will remain on the table. And item number six, a conditional use permit to allow a vehicle service and repair facility at 727, 7722 and 7730, Lake Shore Boulevard, as asked to be tabled, I'll entertain a motion to table this.
Motion to table.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Item number seven will remain on the table. And number eight, an architectural reimage of a commercial building, Chuck E. Cheese, at 8,000 Plaza Boulevard, Unit J, is that applicant here? Please give us your name and address.
Yes, hello, good evening.
Actually, I'm sorry, I need a motion to remove number eight from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, all right, now tell, give us your name and address, tell us about Chuck E. Cheese.
Yes, sir. My name is Andreas Campos, I work for property, I'm sorry, Parkway Construction and Architecture, as a property development administrator. Our work address is 1,000 Civic Circle in Lewisville, Texas. Let me know if you need the zip code, that's enough, okay. Well, as you're aware, we are remodeling and improving the Chuck E. Cheeses on a national level. We've been very lucky, and I've been fortunate to be part of 120 projects in the last 18 months. And so now we're here to look over some design plans and, for, for improving, and of course, doing a tenant improvement of the one here in Mentor, so with that, I know that the last time we spoke, you had some concerns and some ideas on how the design should be revised. So we went back to our department, architecture department, and we got some revisions in, and I was able to forward that to Ms. Mitchell, and hopefully share that with you today, and so we're really excited, and of course anxious to get to the, as far as the project moving forward, and of course, go through with the building department for code and, and other revisions, or at least a plan review. And so with that, I want to leave it open for any thoughts, ideas, or concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, anything?
The, the rendering that's on the screen right now is in response to the recommended condition number two that indicates design option A, which they originally, they had resubmitted, shall be incorporated with the proposed circles eliminated from the tan stripe pattern below the arches. We're fine, the administration has no objections based on, based on the changes, and we have recommended four conditions.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkovich.
Question, I guess, maybe for the applicant. The, the green background at the, the center of the gable that's now holding the signage, is that just a paint that's applied to the tan, or is there an actual change in plane, some sort of thickness of this material, so it sort of stands out as a sign board, rather than just a, a change in paint?
There, there is a thickness to it, to give it almost a 3D effect.
Okay. Okay, thank you, I, I think that helps me, anyway, rather than it just being painted on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Mr..
Well, no, well, no, I'm just asking a question, since they've committed, submitted this, we don't really need condition two, right?
We do.
We do.
Oh, we do? Oh, I see, because this now is A.
It's in response to the conditions.
So it's four conditions, yeah.
All right, all the way from Texas, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the four conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, and I thought we talked about tokens last time.
I know, I know, I'm working on it, so. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business, we have a building addition, site alteration at 8490 Tyler Boulevard, Classic Recondition Center. Third time is a charm. Come on up, give us your name and address, tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Kurt Hansen, Classic Auto Group, 8490 Tyler Boulevard. We are proposing, I think it's kind of the existing site plan right there, but we are proposing the very front northern portion of the buildings, about that five-foot bump out, to remove that off the front of the building. That allows to put a drive to connect the drive from Cadillac on the, the west side, the, actually, east side of Cadillac Building, over to the drive that is basically on, on the east side of the reconditioning center. This allows you to allow, as we classic, to be able to get from one end of their campus to the other without having to go out onto Tyler Boulevard, in and out during the certain times of the day, so it make it easier and alleviates some of the traffic on Tyler.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I have nothing other than the six conditions noted.
And you've read the six conditions in the staff report, and you're good to go. Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the six conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No questions?
Kathy, do you have anything?
No, nothing.
Oh, okay.
I feel like this gentleman here is, is some real quick.
My name is Joe Luptek, I live at 6448 Dawson Boulevard, and I'd like to just mention a project that's at the top of the street, the 7722, that's been tabled. I, I just want to point out, in a city where if you cut down a tree in your tree lawn, there's a $2,000 fine. If you have a bump in your sidewalk, it's gotta be repaired. Or if your lawn gets too high, you have, the city will come over and cut it and charge you for it. But yet, this building has sat in a, in disarray for months upon months. And I, for one, I'm getting tired of looking at it, and I was just, I just wanted to voice my opinion, what it's worth, and if we could expedite this process and either tear it down, or revitalize it, whatever they're gonna do.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much for listening.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.